All right.
Oops, Jesus.
We good?
It's TV on.
Oh, no, it's that.
Yeah, we're good.
All right.
Oh, call.
So we're not.
Déjà vu.
Here, how are these speakers up here?
Is it because the speakers are too?
No, I've got that mouse.
No way.
Now try.
Hello. It's kind of loud, though. All right, I would call to order the regular, uh, December twenty, December twelve. Me and Dayton City Council stands for the flag.
Let's lead this to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I need a motion in a second for the agenda.
I'm motion. Go ahead, Travis.
Travis, and then, uh, Matt. Any changes?
Nothing from us here in council.
Nobody? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. Motion carries five zero. Need a motion in a second for consent.
A motion.
No second.
Travis, Dave, discussion. Anybody?
Dave's got something. I always do. I did get a lot of questions answered, so that's good. So, I, on item F, I want to say again that this is the payment on well five, which I have no problem with the payment on this one, but I want to say again that I think that that overrun for the, uh, the dynamite and whatever else was involved there should have a, have a change order associated with it. I mean, it's almost 25% of the contract value, and I know it was the right thing to do, but I still think that's the way it should be documented.
Yep, that'll be in January, so we just seem to have enough time to get that to us this meeting, but it'll be in January. Thank you.
Uh, item L, um, the, uh, we're proving that, that we do not need an environmental impact statement, um, for the Dayton mixed-use development. I don't have a problem with that, but one of the comments I, I caught was from the Met Council about us having multiple zoning on the same parcels of property and, uh, suggesting that we resolve that not as part of this deal, but, uh, I think that we should have that in mind. I know that it'll probably happen during the, you know, as part of the large area plan for that area, but I think we should be looking at that overall and especially as we slide toward, uh, developing the 2050 plan, that we should take that into account when we're doing zoning, that it not split properties the way that it, we got in some places today.
John, did we take that into account when the, we were doing the master planning area for that square mile that we have, you know what I'm talking about, that where the Dayton Parkway will eventually go?
Yeah, so the, the master plan is the area north of, of the DHL property, which is the EAW. The, uh, the split, I'm going to call it the, the land use designation is, um, shown in the 2040 comprehensive plan, so it's not the zoning, it's the comp plan, that needs to change. Uh, so that, that would be amended or, or updated as part of, um, I'll say the, the development review process.
But as we, and we had the open house, we showed kind of what the land use would look like in the future. Do we line those up with properties or are we still splitting properties with multiple? Where we could, did we try to at least?
Yeah.
Is my question clear? Am I not wording it well? You told me.
Yeah, I understand your question, Councilor Charles. Um, we do our best to keep properties with one land use guidance. Sometimes, given existing properties are really large, you do have to split them up to meet what the future alignment will be for Dayton Parkway and other roads and just the general shape, size, and area that lends itself for certain land uses. So we try to wherever possible, and that's part of the refining pieces we went through as we heard comments on, from the open house and from the survey, um, to try and, we can, we'll tweak that to make sure that there's not any, we want to avoid small chunks. So if you take a big property and you have only 10% of it in one land use category and nine in the other, sometimes there's 50/50 splits. Those can't be avoided, but we try to minimize them where possible.
Yeah, I'm more worried about, like, I think in the current comp plan, there's a small property that has like a corner of it.
Yeah.
Totally different use, like, yeah, avoiding that. I get the 50/50, okay. Thank you.
Yeah, and ones that are hard to work with, like, triangles can be tricky depending on where they are, so.
Thank you. Sorry. That's okay. No, that helped clarify. I have one more, and that is on item M, um, the Mill and Overlay project, and my question is around Thickened Hills Lane. Certainly that is not in good shape, but there's also a sign on it that says it's a private road, and so do we actually own it?
That caught all of us off guard as well. We did look into it, it is public right-of-way, so it's presumed to be a public roadway. None of us know where the sign came from or why it's there.
Is it, does it look like a sign that we would have purchased?
No.
Doesn't to me, I don't know if others have a different opinion, but it looks almost homemade.
So maybe that, that.
There may be.
Mill and overlaid as part of.
It looks polished as well, so I think it's been there for some time.
Well, it, yeah, it could be that, it could get a sign that says no outlet or, you know, those kind of signs, but, yeah, I, um, I was going to ask too about that. Is that, that road in as bad a shape or it's, it's, uh, it's to the point where we need to do a mill?
It's pretty rough.
Is it?
They can do some, some attention.
And there wouldn't be any, because it's a pretty narrow road, that's why it made me wonder if it wasn't private. We're not changing the size of it, we're just.
No, no, it must be replaced as it is. A pavement.
Must be 24 feet wide, I would think.
I think it is only about 24.
All right, that's all I had.
Anybody else got anything? All right, so I got a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. Uh, motion carries five zero. Open forum. Do we have anybody here for open forum? Is there anybody online for open forum?
So if you wanted to speak in open forum, use the raise your hand function.
All right. Staff consultant, council updates. Zach?
Yes, good evening, Mayor and members of the council. Got a couple of updates for you, just a couple of quick reminders. We have our staff yearly recap ugly sweater party this Thursday. I know I sent out in an email as well, but city call will be closed from 11 to two to provide the time to get there and back and employees to join. This annual recap get together is a thank you to all of our hardworking and well-deserving employees for a great year, so thank you very much. The weekly update last week involves some discussion around the tax format property at the interchange. Is there some direction from council on whether we want to get an appraisal done now or if we want to wait until we have a full pro forma done from staff, um, before spending those dollars? I don't anticipate it to be very much, but I don't know the number until I ask, so.
I think we should.
I would do that.
We'll need it for the, to compare to the pro forma anyways in my mind, so possibly, okay. That's good, thank you very much. And then I am out of the office, uh, for a week starting next Thursday. If you need anything from me, best of luck or get at me before the 21st because I will try and, I'm going to try to turn my phone off.
Disappear.
Disappear for a little while, so always Merry Christmas and Happy New Year, everyone, so thank you.
Amy?
I don't have any updates.
All right.
I have a couple of updates, uh, on the wellhead treatment plant. There's been quite a lot of activity out there. The earth retention system is, is fully installed now. The excavation is complete down to the final elevation, elevation for building the base slab and footings. The extra excavated material is stockpiled in the park area down there, and the base rock is, uh, installed and being compacted. There was a small amount of groundwater seeping in there, but, uh, they've managed to, uh, build a trench to get that out of there. The soils have been tested for subgrade by AET, um, and it was deemed adequate for supporting the building, so that's all good news. Looking out a couple of weeks, they're going to be installing the formwork for the base slab and footings, installing reinforced steel for base slab and footings, and then they're going to pour the base slab on the 19th of December.
When does the giant pile of dirt go away?
Sorry?
When's the giant pile of dirt go away?
Uh, that will be at the end of the project, so we'll probably use that for some landscaping and stuff there. So that, yeah, so that, and there's also been a lot of background work, um, with shop drawings and equipment stuff, so that's all going ahead, so we're trying to keep this thing moving along. The road crew have finished, uh, this year's tree trimming schedule, um, and, uh, we're trying to get, uh, some ice forming, uh, on the ice rink, so the guys are going to be out, um, tonight, they're out tonight, um, they'll be doing, uh, sundance and the, uh, hockey rink here, um, trying to get, uh, some water down so it freezes overnight and goes through the day. The idea is to try and get, uh, ice in time for the Christmas break, so we'll give it our best shot, so the guys are going to be out, you know, playing in the evenings over the next couple of weeks.
Gary?
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Want to thank everyone from city staff as well as those that attended, uh, Holly Dayton. I think it was a success based on the numbers that we had, so we look forward to next year. We're going to meet here and make some changes to that coming up, so it's a betterment for all. And then also look in the communicator for, um, January's communicator, provided we get snow. Hopefully we don't, but, um, wish, you know, hope goes, but, um, we will have adopt a hydrant advertised in there, so, um, once we get snow, we'll kind of move that program forward.
Gary, how's the fundraiser coming along?
For the adopt a family?
Yeah.
Yeah, so, um, we did good. We've, uh, came up with a family, adopt family, um, communicated with them on Monday, and next Thursday we will be, um, delivering, um, gifts to them.
Awesome, thank you.
Evening, members of the, Mayor, members of the council. Last Wednesday we delivered our coats to the Justin Morneau Coat Drive. It was in Rogers this year. Over 2,300 coats were donated between the numerous agencies. Unfortunately, Moundsview won with over 600 coats, and Rogers was a close second with 500 and some coats, so, um, we'll try our hardest again for next year, but, um, hopefully we can win the bat back. We won it the first year, so. On Friday, Officer McElpine delivered all the toys for Tots to Care 11. So if you saw the squad cars down there on Friday, that's what that was for. And then tomorrow night, we're doing shop with the cup.
All right. John?
I've got a number of projects that are going to be lined up for January. One other item, a few months ago, we had a, uh, two or three property owners in the northwest area of Dayton that had requested to develop prior to sewer being available, and we had a good meeting with Met Council staff of, you know, what are the complications of, of developing prior to the, uh, the sewer staging plan? So I'll send out a memo, uh, to the council kind of summarizing that, but, and then we'll be asking for some direction from the council, so more information will follow.
Kevin?
I have no updates.
Tori?
I have no updates.
Jason?
Nothing here.
Scott?
Uh, the only thing I got is, again, congratulations, staff, you guys did an awesome job on the, uh, parade deal.
That was quite the turnout.
That was an awesome turnout, so.
Travis?
I would echo the same thing. It was a, it was a fun night, it was a real fun night with all the city staff and all the residents, so.
I would, I would ask for a heated vehicle next year.
Golf cart with doors.
Golf cart with doors, yeah.
Well, that side-by-side was pretty sure. It was, mhm.
I got it.
I'm good.
Matt?
I just want to say thanks to Travis for covering the Parks Commission meeting while I was out with the country last week, so thanks, sir.
No problem. Okay, on to, uh, council business. Item Q, truth and taxation presentation.
So, uh, Mayor, if you're with the council, we'll do the presentation quick and then we'll open the public hearing up for anybody who has any comments or questions about their tax statement, which I'm assuming some of these individuals in the audience have questions on, so. Truth and taxation meeting, this is an annual meeting that we have. I don't like looking at myself in the mirror, so it's not very fun. This is a new picture we got of French Lake, I thought it was a really nice picture we took this fall, so appreciate that, Chris. Shout out to Sea Vision, so. Major milestones for the budget, um, approval of preliminary budget in September 12th, this is what people saw on their tax statements. We will approve the final levy in budget tonight after public comment, and then I'll certify it by the end of the week, or December 29th, I'll actually do it by the end of this week, because I want to take care of it, be done, so. Those are major milestones. There was a lot of legislative changes, last year there was none, this year there's a ton, and I'm going to try to go through them and explain them the best I can. This is, comes from the League of Minnesota Cities, they send us a budget guide every year after all the legislative session impacts. So we did some holiday changes, they added Juneteenth officially, um, they also renamed Columbus Day to, oh, it's now Not-Not Indigenous Peoples' Day, um, so we do not currently have that holiday off, um, so we, I think we swapped that one for another holiday, but we do not have that day off currently. They repealed the salary cap for, um, the salary on city employees that used to be limited to 110% of the governor's salary, that no longer is the case. That will alleviate some of the pressure on city administrators who have been around for a long, long time that have been capped by that salary. The paid family medical leave program, this will begin in January of 2026. You will see an additional payroll tax on your employer and employee portion that you pay, um, and this will be added and then paid for by the state. And it was a, basically a set time of paid leave that you get for short-term disability, to be able to be out of work and take care of your family and your medical needs. Earned safe and sick leave, this is more immediate, this starts in January 1 of 2024, and all employees will have to accrue a minimum of one hour of sick leave per 30 hours worked that does not matter if you are part-time, full-time, or the difference. This is for all employers in the state of Minnesota, including governments. And then up to 48 hours in a year, you are a minimum able to earn, and 80 hours banked max. We meet that currently for full-time staff, but we will have a personnel policy update that, in order to enact that for part-time employees, just so that you guys are aware that it's a legislative change, so you'll see that in our personnel policy update, and that'll be in the beginning of January. There was a water rate increase, I had no idea what this even, um, really meant to us, but it's 20 bucks more per million gallons pumped above the month. I know that Marty probably knows about it more than I do, and I rely on him to tell me that information, so. And then something about, I don't even want to say the word, naloxone?
Naloxone.
Naloxone, there you go, supply and training, so every EMT and officer has to carry at least two unexpired doses at the start of their shift. And if they use it during the start of their shift, they have to replace it by the end of the shift or something. This is for narcotics overdoses. Any questions on the legislative session, in fact? So there was a lot, this was the main recap from LMC, um, but I'm sure there was a ton more, because there was a lot of bills passed. Tax levy parameters, I go through this just so that you have an idea of what we mean when we say 1%, and it depends on what it is. So 1% tax rate change is equivalent to $53 a year for the average home. Average home this year was $515,000, and that's if your home did not change value between 2023 and 2024. In equivalent, just to make sure that you're aware, a 1% tax rate change means that we would have $200,000 more dollars of tax revenue for the city, just so, um, perspective of 1% for 53 bucks for a year gets the city roughly 200 grand of tax revenue. A 1% tax levy increase equals about $66,500 if we have a 1% tax levy change, so there's some, there's some, um, numbers that go back and forth there, they really relate to each other, but they're, uh, based on different formulas, so if you have questions, let me know, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. Um, CPI was 5.3% from 2022 to 2023, this is per the Minneapolis-St. Paul region as of November 2023, and the one-month change from September, uh, to November is 1.5%. And then I put this in there this year that I did not have last year. Tax dollars received by the city do not change for the entire year. There's this, um, common, um, misinformation that every time we build a new house, it means we get more money. It means exactly not that, it means that we just, everyone takes a little less share of the pie of how much taxes get paid, so, um, when we put up a bunch of homes, or have homes built in the city or a bunch of commercial buildings, does not mean the city is getting any more dollars, we get the same number of dollars that we set with the levy, so nothing else additional comes in, just everyone splits the pie a little bit more. And then how property taxes get calculated, um, I got this from another city, I thought it was kind of interesting to show, uh, but basically we determine expenditures, and this is typically happens around in May or June of the year, and we determine expenditures, both operating debt and capital expenditures. We subtract out any other revenues we get from, from those expenditures, and that equals the levy, so it would be like grants or aid dollars, um, building permit dollars, um, interest earnings, so on and so forth, any other revenues that we would see, we subtract those out, and that gets us the levy. And then we take the levy and divide it by the total tax capacity, which that tax capacity number changes by the more or less homes we have and commercial businesses we have in town, that gives us our tax rate. And then the assessed value of your home times the rate gives you how much tax you're going to pay, and that's for each individual, um, jurisdiction, and take the tax minus any credits or refunds that you have, gets your net tax, and that net tax equals how many property taxes you pay. Homeowner pays the property taxes of the county, the county then disperses them based on your tax rate, and then the city receives a tax settlement twice a year, typically those are in July, end of June, end of November, or December. The 2024 levy compared to 2023, we are looking at an 18.63% change that is down from the preliminary levy that you would have seen on your property tax statement, which would have been 19.4%. I don't know what that means in terms of dollars per person. I don't think it's going to be a lot, but I don't know that number, so I'm not going to quote it, um, but it will be a change on your property tax statement, so whatever you see on your property tax statement currently for the city of Dayton, it will be less, I don't know how much less, it depends on your home value, but it will be less than it was on the preliminary tax statement you saw.
Did you happen to talk to the county about that number that they published, the 21%?
I did not.
And do you, I wonder if it typically doesn't include the EDAs?
Probably doesn't, and I don't know why it wouldn't, because it's still a tax.
Right.
We've had this conversation before, council and myself, and it's still a tax, which is why I use it as the number of the total, because it is a tax in total, and it should be incorporated in that. So we reduced the EDA levy, so everyone saw 21% increase, um, per the county, and it was really not a 21% increase, it was really 19.4, because you take away the $100,000 of EDA general fund dollars that we had. This year, it would show 20.13, if you can see on the right-hand column, total general levy shows 20.13, that would be the change in the general, and you have to subtract 1.5% for the EDA, and that gets you a net of 18.63, so. I don't know why they do it, I'll tell you, the county does some odd things, so I never ask. Tax capacity over the last five years to show where we were at. Five years ago, we were at $9.9 million of tax capacity. 2024, we are at $23.2 million. That's just, just under a $5 million change just from last year alone. I would anticipate there'll be something of a similar change next year with all of the commercial stuff coming online that has been built, so. And those valuations come on January 2nd, so whatever happens as of January 2nd will be the valuation that they determine for your 2025 property taxes, just so that everyone is aware of how those numbers come and where they start at, so. Showed this graph last year, I thought it was interesting, and I will continue to show it, but you can't see what the heck it says, so that's cool, there we go. Tax levy compared to tax capacity, so that black line really shows our tax capacity overall, and the bar shows how much taxes we are taking out of that tax capacity. The bigger the difference between the bar and line, the less the tax rate is. As you can see in 2018, it was fairly close or much closer than it is currently, and as, as that gap has grown, the tax rate goes down.
Thinking 2023 number is low. Thought it was close to 15 and a half, uh, doesn't matter. We can look at it later.
Sure. Yeah, I said, I use the same numbers, and if it's pulled from the wrong spot, it might be add. It should be the same, but you never know. Screwed it before, I wouldn't say it will not get screwed again. Impact on homeowners, this is, um, so the reason why we had a decrease in that preliminary tax levy from 19.4 down to 18.63 is because the, um, some concerns with the county's numbers or what they gave us to begin with, so we wanted to, the, the council's objective was to keep the tax rate the exact same, essentially meaning that if you had the same valuation home from one year to the next, your bill for the city of Dayton would not change, as in that's how much rate you'd pay, which is, um, dollars that you'd pay to the city of Dayton, so if your valuation did not change, your, your taxes should not change to the city of Dayton. However, if your valuation changed, um, it will go up, you will pay more taxes because your house is now valued at more dollars, but there's unfortunately nothing we can do about that. That is something you can discuss with the county when they send out your final tax statement, which will be in March-ish of next year, so. It is a second piece of paper that comes in that same mailing. If anybody has any questions about where that is, you can give us a call anytime. Five-year of historical data, just to show, um, we did this before, and it was kind of interesting, the left-hand graph shows the tax capacity versus the tax levy. The red line is the tax levy, the blue line is the tax capacity. Historically, we've always been very close to those numbers, as in if the levy goes up or the capacity goes up, so does the levy, keeping those similar. The change happened early in 2022, when we started having some separation, which would mean lowering of the tax rate, as you can see on the right-hand graph. The bigger the difference between the red and the blue line, the lower the tax rate goes every time and the decrease it is. It's not a one-to-one ratio because of, um, numbers and formulas and fiscal disparities and stuff that make a whole lot of no sense for most people, so I'm not going to get into the details, but, um, yeah, if those numbers don't match, they're, like I said, those two bars on the left-hand side don't match, doesn't mean that the tax rate's not going to adjust a little bit, but the bigger the gap, the lower the drop, so.
That, that 2020 is also when we instigated the franchise fee.
Correct.
So there was a.
Yep, so there's a, yeah, there's a percentage on top of that, I don't, I can figure it out early.
This makes sense, but.
Yeah, 2020 is when the franchise fee was added to your electric and gas franchise fees on your bill, so. 2024 preliminary tax numbers for end-up in county, um, this is very interesting as always to see where we're at compared to other communities around us, as we always hear that we are a way higher tax rate, that is no longer the case. We are roughly right at the same number as Rogers', and from what I have heard from Rogers', their percentage is going up, so I don't know what that number's going to be, but it should be, and I guess it'll be somewhere on 35.56 or something like that.
Yeah, it's not much, but Oseo's is the one that's going to spike.
That one went up a lot, yep. Unfortunately, I don't know what's going on there, but.
They doubled their police department.
Yeah, probably. It could be the fact that they're only one square mile.
Yeah.
You have any questions about this, like I said, we are almost right in the middle, I mean, we're getting, if we start getting too low, what I'll do is I'll change it to some of the communities that are further out, which would be lower tax rates, I don't know if that's going to look all great and all, because it's, we're trying to show how we compare to other communities around us and not necessarily just to get the lowest tax rate in the.
I think we're in a good spot now.
Yep. Key changes in '23 to '24, um, we had some decrease in revenue based on permit activity, we had seen a lot of permit activity the last few years, 2023 was less, I think we're at 205? Last time I checked, it was last week, or 208, something like that, um, which is less than we had, we had 500, um, just two years ago, so. We have to budget for those revenues coming in, and when those aren't going to come in, we have to reduce that revenue. And then we had an increase in interest revenue, as everyone knows, rates, interest rates have gone up, which is great for people investing, and that's really fantastic, but it's not great for when you're borrowing money, so we'll see what happens in the next few years. Additional staff, we are looking to, um, hire three police officers next year, one at mid-year, and looking to hire one assistant fire chief and two part-time public works maintenance employees. Those are the main changes of additional staff. And then we had to increase the budget based on historical trends, inspections, assessing IT, and then increasing inflation of basically all the items. We've seen historical inflation lately, and it's been incredible for everybody, um, not only in your home and personal life, but also in the city as well as everything with a government name on it always goes up more than what your personal stuff does, unfortunately, so. General fund revenues, I'm just going to quickly brief over those, um, they are up 1.228 million, most of that is in property taxes, um, some of that is in other items, but again, you see the two main changes of the two lineups on top, which is 1.338 million up top on the lop line for increase, and then a $316,000 decrease in licenses and permits, and that is for that activity of building permits. Expenditures, did the same thing, obviously, we had to try to keep a balanced budget, which means we're not going Obviously, we had to try to keep a balanced budget, which means we're not going to make or lose any money next year. The idea is to break even, and so we have a 1.228 million increase in expenditures. Overall, most of those were in patrol. We have the, unfortunately, we hired three officers. That's where most of the money goes to. And the rest came from fire and public works. Utility fund budgets, I'll quickly hit those. I know we talked about these back in October. Again, overall, water fund is healthy. We had a significant increase in water sales from 2022 to 2023, and we anticipate that same to happen in 2024. So we are budgeting roughly $750,000 more, which is why you're not seeing a large increase in those rates from '23 to '24. Same thing with the sewer fund. We did see, as we see an increase in water, we always see an increase in sewer. It is not one-to-one, though, because water or sewer is based on an averaging, which happens in the month of January and February on your March bill, just so everyone's aware that whatever usage is done in January and February is what you will be billed at for the rest of the year, unless usage is less. So for example, somebody uses 6,000 or 8,000 gallons in those two months, they will be billed 6,000 or 8,000 gallons of sewer for the rest of the year, unless they go on a trip to Bali for the entire two months in the summer, then they'll be charged zero. So they don't, they get charged the lesser of the average or actual. So if you actually use less, we will only charge you with your actual usage. And as I mentioned before, our proposed 2024 rates, there is only a 1% increase in sewer and a 1% increase in water. As you can see in the little graph on the right or the little table on the right-hand side, I did a comparison to figure out where we're at, and we haven't much moved in the last three years that have been doing this on where our ranking is amongst area communities around us. We have a higher, we'll say, rate for some items related to water specifically, but it's because we are building out our system, and unfortunately, it is very expensive to build out a system, as you saw with the wellhead treatment plant being close to $8 million just to get a wellhead treatment plant in. Any questions at all? Otherwise, I'll stand for questions if we have any, and I'll stand for questions during the public hearing as well.
Anybody? I got none. Public hearing?
Yep.
All right, open up the public hearing. Anybody here to speak to this? Nobody? Somebody online? All right, we'll close the public hearing.
Okay, that's all I need right now. Thank you very much.
All right, item R.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Tonight, before you have ordinance 2023-11 and resolution 49-2023, which is an administrative subdivision rezoning and site review for Opus Development Company. So the parcel is located off of County Road 81 and Territorial, 17600 Territorial Road. It's a 10.01 acre site. It is guided industrial and public institutional. Public institutional is the small piece of the cell tower on it currently. It is currently zoned B4 commercial-industrial, and it is in the current use of staging area with utilities available. To go over the subdivision proposed, the request is to subdivide the existing parcel into two parcels, one being 9.76 acres, which is for the development of the warehouse industrial, and then parcel B, which is a half an acre for existing telecommunications equipment. So you'll see it's kind of an L-shaped parcel. That's to allow for subdividing that parcel off from the majority of the development. Because this was previously plotted as part of the Dayton Industrial Park subdivision, we can do it as an administrative subdivision, because it's a previously plotted property. The proposed lots both comply with acquired lot size with depth standards in their respective zoning districts. So that's part of the rezoning request is to rezone them, and it does meet those standards for the lot sizes for both of those districts. So as I said, the existing parcel is zoned B4. There's two rezoning requests. One is to rezone parcel A, which is for the Opus warehouse development, to I-1 light industrial, and parcel B to ES, which is essential services districts. That does match the land use guidance of industrial and public institutional for the two parcel A and parcel B. Again, they meet all the performance standards and lot with area setbacks for those districts. The ES or essential services district is for essential services like sewer, water, telecommunications, things like that. So there are no performance standards similar to like setbacks and things like that for the ES district. Those are within the standards for what type of equipment is going on, whether it's a tower or a wellhouse or things like that. No changes to the existing structures or the antennas on parcel B, which is the cell tower. So it will comply with the, just what was existing there before with the telecommunications requirements. So with it being consistent with the 2040 comprehensive plans, staff does support the proposed rezonings. Moving into the site plan, in your packet, there was a slightly older site plan, so I'll just note the one pretty visible change is in the, I shouldn't move the mouse. It's on the Dayton Parkway side. There's a write-in access shown there. This was a recommendation from the planning commission, so they had three recommendations. One of theirs was to have a write-in access along Dayton Parkway. So this is shown on the revised plan. Everything else is pretty similar. There are some minor changes, but overall, the development is the same. So there's still two accesses on Territorial Road. The building itself is 132,000 and some change square feet. All the parking orientation stayed the same as the plan that's in the packet, so there's still parking or surrounding the building, and then the loading bay doors and the dock stalls on the north side of the building. And then the stormwater ponding on the east side, and then some of it will go across under Dayton Parkway to the west side. The other change, plan change at least from the planning commission, was recommending to move some landscaping up to screen on what would be the northeast side, so the side fronting the railroad and the track lines and then the County Road 81 side, so the app can move some of their landscaping around to provide a better screening on that property line. So that's one change on here is that long side on County Road 81 has more trees in that area as there weren't any going into the planning commission plan. So the request is for site plan approval to allow construction of 132,000 square foot speculative industrial warehouse and office building on parcel A. The building, parking lot, everything complies with impervious surface limits, number of parking stalls, things like that. No modifications to parcel B. Because it has current utilities, it'll connect to utilities with the development, and their landscaping does comply with required numbers of plants, shrubs, landscaping, screening, all of those standards. As I mentioned, with access, there's three shown on the plan, write-in on Dayton Parkway and two full accesses on Territorial. Those will provide or be the main accesses. I'll go through, there is a stipulation with the write-in. We, because Dayton Parkway is currently a city-owned or a city-maintained roadway and is planned to be transferred to Hennepin County, we had to go to comment with Hennepin County to make sure that the write-in access wouldn't impact the jurisdiction transfer. Hennepin County, through correspondence with Jason, said that it would. So there is a stipulation in the resolution that the write-in access must be closed when that jurisdiction transfer takes place. As Hennepin County indicated, they would not accept the roadway with that access onto it, because it does not meet their access spacing guidelines.
Who pays for that?
So, there, in the resolution, there was a condition saying that an escrow be placed with the city. We had a call with the applicant. I'll rush ahead a couple slides.
You can wait, you can answer. Go back through your...
Well, yeah, this will be important at the end, because it's going to provide some modified language for a condition for that very effect. So I'll get to it in just a minute.
That's fine.
Parking, as I mentioned, parking meets the requirements. The office use requires one space per 200 square feet. The warehouse use requires one space per employee on maximum shift or one space per 200 square feet, whichever is greater. Based on a typical office-to-warehouse standard, they're above what would estimate to be 125 parking stall minimum. They're at 153, so they are well above and have some excess parking. They do, however, have proof of parking shown that's on the plans. The part with the stormwater area needs to be removed to comply, and then there is a future proof of parking on the west side that was removed as part of the plans as well. Loading and storage areas, so they have 19 semi-trailer loading areas along the north side of the building. They have an accessory use for semi-trailer parking, and that does comply with the zoning ordinance standards in the section that talks about it, which is 62, which they have 9,240 square feet of semi-trailer parking proposed, where they're allowed to have 46,200 square feet of parking for semi-trailers. That's on that north side of the building, kind of straddling on either side of the telecommunications tower. So there's two areas for parking there, other than the loading bay doors, so separate from those. Architecture, there's a variety. It's an industrial building, but there are a variety of colors, materials, articulations, and windows that are proposed to meet the industrial architecture standards in the ordinance. The primary building material is precast concrete with a mix of colors and textures. The building will be 38, or is proposed at 38.6 feet in height to house the industrial uses planned for it. Stormwater management, so there's two areas. One's on the east side, and then the other is a little more complicated, provided via the existing basin on and off-site. So there's going to be essentially a conduit for stormwater drilled underneath Dayton Parkway that would then extend to the city's already constructed stormwater facilities across Dayton Parkway. This was part of an agreement when Dayton Parkway was installed, or constructed, I should say, that that be utilized for the Opus site or for the, it wasn't called the Opus site at that time, but the property. That would, 60% of the stormwater would account by going under, through or across Dayton Parkway to the existing stormwater management facilities over there. So a new 30-inch conduit to convey the stormwater is proposed to those off-site basins, which is on the city property across the way. That'll be used as part of this. It will be drilling that under there. The stormwater ponds don't need to be expanded. At least, that's my understanding, Jason. They don't need to be expanded because they were already constructed with adequate size to convey 60% of the stormwater from the Opus site. And then final design for that will come in with the cost estimates that'll be finalized as part of the DA. So as you probably saw, there were some highlight areas in the DA with X dollars because we don't have everything designed and finalized to know exactly what those will be to be put in the DA, but in terms of the language, all of that's in the DA. So planning commission did review this back in their November meeting, recommended approval with the following modifications, which was the write-in only on Dayton Parkway, relocate trees from the south perimeter of the site to the adjacent railroad right-of-way, which is that northeast side, like I mentioned. And then there was a small sidewalk connection to Territorial Road, which they recommended removal of. So staff did update the approving resolutions to reflect it, and the applicant did provide updated plans as well. So with that, planning commission staff does recommend adoption of resolution 49-2023, which approves the administrative subdivision site plan and developers agreement, and then ordinance 2023-11, which is the rezoning of the site from B4 to light industrial and essential services. This is the revision I was talking about, so there was a condition to AI-1, if you're going to go all the way in on the indents, for a write-in access being subject to removal upon transfer of Dayton Parkway responsibility from the city of Dayton to Hennepin County. The struck-through red part, which is that an escrow to be determined based on the estimated cost of the work shall be provided to the city. The escrow shall be held for up to 10 years. Upon which of the jurisdiction transfer has not been completed, the escrow shall be released. To change to a more flexible method to allow us to have discussions on what that best method could be, so changing that to a financial tool acceptable to the city shall be put in place to ensure removal of the access upon jurisdiction transfer. So it meets the same goal of having the property owner is the one that pays for the removal of the access when the jurisdiction transfer happens, but there are alternative tools. One that we would be looking at potentially is just being able to put an agreement in place that we would just assess the property for the work to be done at that time. So there's a couple, just because the applicant, and they can maybe speak to this, putting an escrow up, as you can imagine, for 10 years to sit out there could be, it's just, doesn't work on some of their performers, and they don't like to have it sitting out there a lot long.
Well, my concern is it could be way more than 10 years. I don't want to put a time limit on it, because we are also at the limit of development and how quick that happens to build the road long enough for the county to want to take it over. That could be 40 years. So until we know how...
Likely be.
Yeah, well, again, I don't want to assume anything, but it could be. So I don't want to put a time limit on it. So I'm fine as long as, as long as city staff and attorney feel we have a financial instrument in place to manage it. But yeah, I think we need something there, because I want to make sure the city's not paying this. I also would like to make sure that if the, I don't know if we can mandate this or not, but if the property is sold before that happens, that that's disclosed as part of the sale. Because I don't want it to happen as the new...
It would be a document recorded against the property, so they have to disclose it.
Okay. Sure. I just don't want them to be like, oh, next year, we think it's going to go, so we're going to sell it, and then somebody gets stuck with it. Not saying that they would, they're bad people, but things change hands multiple times, right? I just want to make sure that that's made clear.
Yeah, so that's everything for the presentation. If there's any questions for staff, I'll stand for those. Otherwise, the applicant is present if you have any questions for them as well.
Any questions? I have none.
I have none.
I'm trying to think about how to say this, but I think it's unfortunate that the county is, you know, sticking to their guidelines around these kinds of accesses. I don't think there's anything we can do about it now if they, you know, they said no, and they've said no again. But by having this in here, at whatever point down the road that is, whether it's 10 years or 30 years or whatever that we talk about transferring ownership or responsibility for that road, do we still have the right to contest this as a piece of that discussion?
I'll let Jason take that one.
Yeah, I would say when the jurisdictional transfers do occur, certainly, anything can be discussed as far as conditions. Most likely, this would happen in conjunction with some kind of a turnback of a current county road becoming the city of Dayton's responsibilities, such as 202, which is from Fernbrook through Elm Creek Park out to Zachary. Again, all negotiable. Yeah, certain improvements might be needed.
Can they casually take roads that don't meet their guidances, so...
They certainly could. They've just stated very clearly multiple times that this would be a deal breaker as it sits today. So that's what we're basing the decisions off of.
All right, thank you.
Okay, I'll need a motion in a second for ordinance 2023-11, resolution 49-2023.
I'll motion with the changes as written in red on the screen right now.
Okay, I'll give that to Dave. Any more discussion? All those favors say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. Motion carries 5-0. On to item S.
Just a point of clarification. Was that for both the resolution and the ordinance?
Yep. Well, yep, yep. Thanks, guys.
I didn't know if you had said the next part.
What's that?
I didn't know if you said the next part of the agenda.
Oh, yep, go ahead. Item S, resolution 48-2023.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Tonight, we have resolution 48-2023 for a CUP for 13800 Balsam Lane. Bradley Mokness, that lives at 13800 Balsam Lane, would like a CUP for an accessory building that exceeds the maximum allowable square footage per parcel then permitted by right. His property is 2.3 acres, nearly 100,090 square feet. It is zoned R2 residential. Accessory building provisions outline what can be approved administratively and a process to approve accessory buildings that exceed the maximum allowable combined size of buildings by a CUP. On this chart, it shows for R1, over two acres, between two to three acres, they are allowed a maximum of 2,000 square feet combined, and the maximum number of accessory buildings would be three. Construction of the detached accessory building or two-stall garage with a 30-foot by 42-foot footprint, approximately 1,260 square feet. They do have an existing detached accessory building on the property measuring 30.4 feet by 40.6 feet, or a little over 1,234 square feet. And again, like the previous slide... And again, like the previous slide, the maximum allowable combined square footage for our two lots, for two to three acres is two thousand square feet. So he's approximately over that by four-hundred-and-ninety-four square feet. The use will be for the storage of vehicles and items consistent with a residential neighborhood. The existing attached garage is to be remodeled to allow for a handicapped accessible bedroom and bathroom for a disabled relative. Um, one thing that I didn't have on the slide is our code requires a two-car garage um, for all, um, single-family dwellings. So that was his purpose of, with changing this into a handicap accessible space for a relative with constructing the new detached accessory building, it would fulfill that requirement of the code. In residential districts, again, above one acre in size, all accessory buildings, with the exception of attached garages, shall be included when calculating the maximum square footage of accessory building space allowed on a property. Here is a kind of an aerial certificate of survey, where the existing houses, the existing detached garage, and the proposed accessory building. City code allows, or currently says that, uh, accessory buildings cannot be placed in front of the house unless the house is set back a minimum of a hundred-and-fifty square feet. Then the accessory building can go in front of the house half of that amount, so it would be able to go back, if it was a hundred-and-fifty feet, it could go back seventy-five. Um, the house is set back over three-hundred-and-eleven feet, so he has plenty of room. Um, the applicant, um, was asked by the Planning Commission about adding onto the house instead of building another accessory structure, and he had talked to several builders, and it, they could not figure out a way that it would work on the property to add onto it. Here is a street view of the property, so you can see that they have several trees, um, for screening of the accessory building. Um, they did take down some trees that, when they put down where they're gonna build it, but there still is a long tree line that separates, um, this property from the next property. Um, this is a picture of the existing house. Again, they wanna turn this attached garage into living space. Um, and so they're proposing a two-car accessory building. It's more, you could fit three cars in there, but then storage of it, or storage of, uh, lawn mowers, things like that. The other accessory building that's on the property is like forty-five feet away, and it's only a dirt floor, so it was kinda hard to store anything in there. So the recommendations, um, for approval from the Planning Commission, um, the accessory building shall comply with all the provisions of Section one thousand one-point-three-five, accessory buildings and structures. A building permit for the detached accessory building shall be reviewed and approved prior to construction. The detached accessory building shall only be used for storage of personal property accessory to residential use. The detached accessory building shall not be used as a dwelling. The detached accessory building shall not be utilized for all or a portion of a home occupation for commercial activities or for commercial storage. The detached accessory building shall be limited to thirty feet by forty-two feet, and addition, any additional requirements by the building department. The detached accessory building shall be, um, complimentary and designed to the principal building to be approved by city staff at the time of the building permit issuance. The existing two-car garage must be converted into living space within three years of the CUP approval, um, which would be by December twelfth, twenty-twenty-six. The applicant did state at the Planning Commission meeting that he wants to start this right away. So, because that, that condition wasn't originally in there, that, that was something the Planning Commission wanted to add, just to make sure that it got done. Um, and then the applicant must record the CUP resolution with Hennepin County and provide the city with a receipt showing that it was recorded within thirty days. So that's all I have on that. The applicant is not here tonight because he teaches a class, but his builder is here in the audience. If, if you have any questions, he's very familiar with everything and up to date on it. He can answer any questions if I can't.
I have none.
I think the only question I've gotten, and this is because a few years back, we allowed an individual to build another garage, and he promised he would take the other one down, and it, it got to be a battle back and forth. Um, do we check to make sure this residential area is actually done? Does somebody go and look at it?
Um, Mayor and Member Council, uh, the idea would be that we would do that. Um, at the time, likely a few years ago, we probably didn't have the staff or the level of ability to go and do that, to verify and check on those CUPs and IUPs we would have approved. At this point, we would make sure to have a note that says that we have to go and check on it, and we would make sure that it gets done, so.
I just, sorry, I just wanna add that, uh, I watched the, the Planning Commission meeting, and I appreciated the comments of both the resident who came out and the Planning Commission on this, and I thought that was a lot of great discussion, so thank you for that.
I had one, one question and a, and a comment. In the, uh, in the email that was in our pack, packet, um, from, I assume, the property owner Brad Mokness, I'm sorry for butchering the name, um, they said that they had already spent some significant amount of money on this, and that they, um, they understood that it was okay to proceed with this, and I'm wondering who, do we know who told them that that was okay? I don't suppose a builder is gonna know that, maybe that's a question for the resident. But it doesn't, this isn't the first time we've had people building ahead of, ahead of approval, and sometimes it's because they don't know the rules, but this one, at least in, if I'm reading that correctly, it was somebody said it's okay to do this, and, well, of course it's not.
I think it started with previous staff, and then when they left, then it, it got turned over, um, I believe, to landform, and then, um, there was, every, all the documents that I seen, and I believe that Kevin seen, it was for a variance for the location, not the size. The size wasn't indicated on any of the documents, but the homeowner said that he had discussed that, and I, I assume it was with the previous planner. That was on staff, so I think it, I don't know if it was just miscommunication. If that was discussed, we don't have any documentation on it to go back, so I guess we have to take what the applicant is saying, that that possibly was conveyed to him in a different way. He thought that he had a, um, he said he applied for two variances, one for size, one for setback. Then it was determined he didn't need one for size, and then, being that the, the code hadn't been updated on the website where it states that, um, it was a combined total, or that, I'm sorry, that it could be setback, or it could be in the front of the building as long as it, um, was a hundred-and-fifty feet. So then that eliminated the variance for that, but then when I got it for the building permit, I noticed that it was over the square footage. So I talked to the applicant about the CUP, and he had already bought all the materials and everything, 'cause he was under the understanding it was good to go.
Mm-hmm. I can see how that would happen.
All right, yeah, I just think it's unfortunate, fortunately, we have that confusion, and hopefully staff that are here now, you know, are aware of, or make sure people understand where they're sitting on in the approval process before they start spending money on stuff. This one will probably play out okay, but that'd be a lot of money to, you know, try to take lumber back, or, or just lose the money. My other, um, comment was around, um, there, it looks like there's a, a fair number of trees that get taken out for this building to fit in, and, and they're kind of on the properties, the side of the property that does have a neighbor relatively close by, and so it's my hope that they would restore some of that.
And the applicant was, said that he would, if the council would like him to put in some more trees to replace them, that he would willingly do that.
I think that would be a good idea, I don't know that we need to require it.
Okay.
If you want it to be done, I would require it, only because if you don't require it to be done, I will tell you that it will not get done, so. Just letting you know, speaking from my experience, if you want it to be done, let's make sure we are clear with where our request is.
How far off is the new accessory building from the property line?
From the front property line?
From the side property line?
Um, I believe it is, uh, maybe the builder knows more, I don't have his other survey in the packet. Um, okay, I think it's like thirty-five feet.
Thirty-five?
Yeah, I would, just based on a quick arrow, I would guess like twenty.
Twenty, okay.
I think it's closer to the twenty.
To the twenty, okay.
Well, I'm just one voice, but I would prefer that the trees, that some trees be replaced.
Twenty-one point eight feet.
There you go.
The neighboring property owner doesn't have any issue with the building, right, there, does he?
No.
Has he been asked?
I believe he showed up and supported them, I think I have maybe a copy of the letter, but it sounds like everything's good there between the owner and the neighbor right next door there.
This, yeah, this was done by public hearing, so it was a public hearing at the.
I, I don't have a problem requiring the few extra trees. I mean, you can get from the Little Tree Farm, four pine trees for fifteen-hundred bucks, installed in the ground, it'll work for you, already semi-mature, like it's not a big, I mean, you think he spent, say he spent already twenty grand just on what he's done already, so, I don't, I think fifteen-hundred bucks would break the bank to do something like that, or do it himself, I don't have a preference, I'm just saying for reference, I have no problem with that.
Yeah, I guess I would say, like, if, if the existing trees are on the adjacent property are still there, like, I wouldn't want them to waste fifteen-hundred dollars on trees that are just gonna die in shade. It's kinda, I'm looking at the property map right now, I kinda see where they're clearing theirs, and there's still a pretty good line on the neighbors.
Is this a two-story accessory?
No.
No.
Those are pretty nice full-growing pine trees that are on the back property line.
Yeah, let's see, pine and maple, or maybe some oak there too, yeah, they're pretty mature, so. I wouldn't wanna, I guess I wouldn't pin them up against a wall to put that money in just to have it possibly not come through at some point.
Yeah, the neighbor's cut.
And he's got a good line right there.
Oh, he's already got a line.
So, I'd hate to see some new trees go in there just to have them die later on, so.
Scott, trees.
I don't have any issue with.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't, uh, know that I'd have trees in there.
I'd make a motion to approve.
It's all, it's, yeah, I just wanna make sure everyone's clear, it sounds like the council's on board of not requiring the trees.
Yeah.
That's what I heard. Yeah, just wanna make sure I'm clear with the directions, so.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
I'm fine with you, yeah, that's it.
Got a motion from Travis.
I'll say it.
Scott, any more discussion? All those favors say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. Motion carries five zip. Onto item T. Thank you.
Ordinance number twenty-two-three-dash-ten is for sign amendments to our zoning code. At the September twenty-sixth city council meeting, staff received direction to review options to amend the zoning code related to signs placed in the public right-of-way. Staff reviewed the zoning code to make minor edits to subsection six to prohibit all signs within the public right-of-way, and to prohibit the placement of contractors' advertising signs, so they're only placed on the parcel in which they are doing work on. Um, staff had gone out, took some pictures of signs that are out there in the right-aways. Um, they're in the neighborhoods, they're along the main roads. These are all off-premise signs. Off-premise signs are allowed in our commercial and industrial district, but not in residential. Um, here's some pictures of, uh, directional signage, and Daytona Golf Club sign. This sign proceeds the, um, when the code started in two thousand and eight. Um, however, the sign face is new. Um, I do not believe it changed in size. Um, they just, it is new where they put the pickleball on there and the golf simulator. And then they just, they kept the posts, it's the same posts that were in there. Um, these are temporary freestanding signs, um, flags. I don't have a picture of the one that had, um, a balloon, and I know the Planning Commission, they did not like the balloons, that they thought that, that, that those should be restricted, and they actually are, in our zoning code, it says signs can't be higher than eight feet. So if you consider the balloon or these flags are signs, then that would be in non-compliance. There, and here are some development signs. Um, this sign, as you go into the development for D.R. Horton, I believe this, these signs are required part of, I don't know if it's OSHA or what it is for union, um, however, they don't need to be in the right-of-way, they just need to be where they are, um, seen by the employees, that they don't have to go search for it, that it's in a prominent space. Could be where they parked, could be, you know, somewhere else, but, um, here it is in the right-of-way.
Are those?
Oops, sorry, how do I go back, Amy?
Those two.
The other arrow, or whatever one.
Okay.
The two signs on the right there, are those in the right-of-way?
These.
Or are they on their property?
I don't know, John, do you know?
It's close, right.
Oh, yeah, that's off the county road.
Not in the right-of-way, right?
Pardon me?
We've saw, even if those are not in the right-of-way, there's still size limits, correct?
Correct.
And I'm guessing those exceed those size limits, is that correct?
I don't think.
Have to check on that one?
I have to.
I'll have to go check. Pretty big.
But, that seems like something we should look at.
Yeah.
I, it's, I mean, to catch up.
I mean, to me, that's, that's one of the problems, two problems I see. One of them is a billboard-esque sign, and fourteen builder signs of the same company around an intersection, so I.
Yeah, they are limited to the number as well, that they can have.
It's almost like builders don't think cars have GPS, and phones don't have GPS, and people now have to use maps and get lost everywhere, 'cause it's like, they, they think you're gonna get lost getting there, and it's just unbelievable to me how many signs they have up.
So there's currently a limit to the number?
Of signs that they can have, temporary signs?
Yeah.
Yes.
Oh.
Um.
What is it, five hundred?
Yeah. Yeah. We limit how long they can be on there, and, um, let's see. Each construction site will be allowed up to two signs each, limited to a maximum of thirty-two square feet in area.
Per construction site?
Yep, freestanding signs shall be limited to a maximum height of eight feet. And then they can have those out there, and they can't exceed thirty-six months from the date a permit is issued for the development.
Okay.
Or until building permits have been issued for eighty-five percent of the dwelling units, whichever is less restrictive.
Um, so site implies we're talking about a development, developer, not necessarily builders?
Well, the cons, I believe it's.
That would be the builders, so like, uh, development gets approved, and then the builders would buy the lots from them, and then they get them, supply for thirty-six months from the start of the plat. Like, it would be thirty-six months from the start of the development.
Or eighty-five percent, which is less restrictive.
I heard the number two.
Pardon me?
Two per site.
Correct.
And a site we're looking at as an entire development?
I'm guessing a lot.
Yeah, I would say better than a lot.
By lot, but I don't know the.
Yeah.
But that's excluding the smaller signs, right, it's only the larger signs.
I mean, then, two years ago, that was a thousand signs.
Right.
Yeah, I didn't read, I mean, I have the whole sign.
Okay, so that, sounds like that's not gonna.
But I can look into it.
Yeah, the, the issue that we have is mostly enforcement of this, is that we have to know the code and the ordinance up and down, um, with it being, I don't even know how many pages, my guess is like ten or twelve. Um, you have to know every single little exception to the rule in order for it to, us to enforce it, and then it's also enforcing it of the time of being able to go out and do it. Our police officers and public work staff don't have the time to do it, and they're really the ones that get out of the office, unfortunately.
Yeah, but that's, the sign ordinance is probably not included in the DA either.
So I was wondering if you could include it in the DA?
Um, probably not.
Which if it is, at least if the builders communicated that way, we do have this, maybe that would help.
But.
Maybe that would help, I mean, I'm thinking the two on the right are probably nine by eight and ten by eight, is a guess. Generally, they make them for a sheet of plywood, but.
Right, a couple of them, yeah.
Yeah, it looks like they're a couple sheets. Not that.
We also could reference it, like, when they pull, the different builders come in and they pull their permits that put the signs out there, we could have something that when we issue them the permit, have the sign ordinance attach it, send it to them. We do it electronically, everything's, so you email it. So all you'd have to do is just put the PDF of the sign ordinance, and in the email, just say, please make sure you read whichever section it is.
My, my problem with the, the, the current sign ordinance is it, to me, it kinda throws the baby out with the bathwater. I mean, what that means is, you know, a lot of the businesses around town are done, they can't advertise, they're done advertising as far as that goes. Um, even, you know, and this came up with the Planning Commission, but even if somebody puts out a sign for their, their graduate, it's gonna be out there for a month or so, um, and it's gonna be on the right-of-way, for the most part.
And it's an off-premise sign.
Yep. I mean, it meets all the criteria for getting picked up, so.
But we can't limit or restrict the, what, for a commercial or non-commercial, you can't?
I get that. So I, I don't know. I, I guess I would like to see something done about the, the billboard-type signs.
Okay.
But I'm not sure where to go with the other one. I, I. I know that all of us are tired of seeing, again, fourteen builder signs in one.
I guess, like, my question would be, what is the problem we're trying to solve with this? Is, if you can identify the problem we're trying to solve, then we'll be able to figure out a solution, hopefully.
Well, and I think those are the two that I've heard from residents, is that, you know, not to pick on Lenar, but it's Lenar, Lenar, Lenar.
It's the builder's small signs.
And those things.
They're all Friday night littering, I'm sorry.
And the, um, the blacktop, the, the roofing, the gutters on like every corner, because the, like, the gentleman that came in with the pile of the ones, a lot of those were like jet black. And again, not to pick on jet bike, but like, they're like construction solicitors, debt builders. Like, I would lump that in there as well. I think my, yeah, I, yeah.
But see, that's how a lot of them get their business.
So I have no problem if you put it, like, in my yard, like, when, when we got one more, I put it, I put us on up in the yard, right?
Probably is it still in the right-of-way?
Mine was up by the house.
Oh.
So I put, I put mine up right next to the rocks in the house.
And that is in part of this amendment to the, to the code is to prohibit the placement of contractors' advertising signs like that and that they can only be on the parcel where they're doing the work. So then you don't have them all about.
In every intersection.
Correct.
And right-of-way is about ten feet into the property or so. So, yeah, I think the only one that really, that was, when you look at your pictures, that really caught my eye was, oh, go back, you just had.
Go back to that, this one?
Yeah, it was Drive Like Your Kids Live Here. And the only reason that one caught my eyes, because I know when I had asked Zach and the chief to look at ways we could try to get people to slow down residential neighborhoods, one thing they had told me they came across was that studies show that if there's three or four or five of those on, like, very close together on a street, people actually do slow down. So I know that's an ongoing issue in, in the city, and so that's one that I would, I would.
Give an exception to.
If we know that there's studies that show that that helps, I don't want to then say, you can't do that anymore, because if that's helping, I don't want to, you know.
But I mean.
Do the opposite, so.
I, I.
I don't know if we call those safety signs or what we say, like, safety signs are allowed, but I, that's the one, that was one.
Yeah, but there's.
People are gonna say, well.
There's a lot of signs out there that aren't safety.
I, I agree, but my point is, is like, that's one that, because the picture made me think, oh, yeah, that's probably not one we want to get rid of. Like, that's out for the right reason. So.
Would it have the same effect if it was on the other side of the sidewalk?
It probably.
No. Same with that sprinkler sign. If it's up by your house, I bet that half the, the people that would have seen it didn't see it, so.
But your neighbors and that would all see it or anybody going around and, and that's who usually asks, is your neighbors. Hey, who did, oh, you use those guys? Okay.
Well, I, I don't know.
What are we trying to solve?
I want to get the small, small signs out of the intersections. That's like the biggest thing for me. Is that, that, that's what I consider that, is just the litter in the intersections.
So can't you limit Lenar, and I'll just use Lenar because he's easy to think about, uh, can't you limit them to two signs on each intersection?
But then you've got Lenar and MI and D.R. Horton.
Yeah.
And I got the six.
I understand that.
And three businesses. Now you're back up to ten again.
I think, I don't know.
I mean, I, I don't disagree. That's better than nothing, but at the same time, it's gonna, it's not gonna.
It'll still look the same even if you're new to it, too.
I don't think it's gonna make a big difference.
I will tell you, this is one of the slides. Courts, if they're, if it's challenged, they'll look at that and they're not in favor of commercial speech over non-commercial speech. So you're playing, it's maybe showing favoritism to those. So I wouldn't recommend that the council does that. It should be all or nothing in the right-of-way. This slide just goes over non-conforming signs, and I kind of talked about that with the golf, or with the golf course, that the existing signs that are out there, that if they're, were in place at the time of the original ordinance was put in place, that they can stay there. If it's discontinued and it's not on the premise, or the premise is discontinued or its normal operation stopped for a period of one year, say that closed down, oops, sorry, something else moved in a year later, then that sign would have to, they would have to be in compliance with the current.
So it's under change of use to the.
If it's not used for a period of a year.
Yep, okay.
So otherwise, it's, it's legal non-conforming.
Can we, at least, I think, can we at least deal with the size issue, maybe?
There are several sections in the existing code that go over size, so I'd have to review it and bring that back if.
I'm just thinking at a minimum, I, I think the billboard-style signs, it seems like we should be able to target those.
Okay.
No matter who puts them up.
Would council like then to, me to come back with that change before, or before we proceed with this? I think, I don't know if I have to.
Table this as we, that, or John has a question, has a comment?
I don't know if we.
The current ordinance limits it to thirty-two square feet. Do you want to go smaller than that?
One square inch. Just eliminate it, give them a, I mean.
Yeah, that seems, I mean, that's.
Thirty-two square feet?
That's a four-by-eight sheet of plywood. Well, wait a minute, those are already out of compliance.
That's what I'm, that's what I'm saying.
I buy them all the time.
All right, that problem solved.
That's a problem solved.
For the big ones.
Doesn't solve the other problem, which is.
Doesn't solve this real problem.
Yeah, which is how do we stop a bajillion signs all around, but yet find a way to keep.
I don't know if we could limit the number. That's the one question I would have to follow up on, is could you limit the number of signs on a, you know, on a corner or something or on an area?
You just need somebody to enforce it.
And it, that's the thing.
That's the hang of it, right? You could say all you want, but until somebody's out there checking it, like.
That's what I don't know, is if you can do the number, because you could say, okay, there's only one sign that's allowed in an intersection per whatever. Doesn't matter if it's commercial, non-commercial, whatever. You get one sign, or, or two signs, or whatever it is. I'm just throwing numbers out here. That's my only thought. I don't know what else we could do. Again, you could limit it, say, it's not, it's not based on anything, just you only get two signs at one intersection.
Can we, can we do it in a manner that's like no, that, that allows residents to have one sign per resident within the, the ten-foot easement and then non-residential properties aren't allowed signs? Because that would get past the, we're proud of our graduate or whatever that is, the slowdown for your kids. You get one for your residential property.
We're talking about specifically in the right-of-way. It's what I would be, what I would be referred to as.
Yep, yep.
If you, you want to put, you're proud of your grad, graduate, great, you do the only way you want, on your property.
And it's not just that, though. I mean, small businesses, that's, that's one of the things they do is, is advertise.
That's what I mean. So you could do, you could have one or two per intersection.
But they could go to the residents.
They can go to the resident.
Just like what we do, we go to residents and we ask them, hey, can we put a sign in your yard? Like, we don't just go out and throw signs out places, right? Like, we get approval. So they go top those homeowners, just like we all do, right?
Yeah, that's not, that's not big of a ask.
I don't, no. I mean, hey, I'm a local business owner. Come and check out my shop. If you'd like, let's put a sign in your yard, just help advertise. Like, that's no difference than what we do.
And when you say we do, I want to make sure you're clear. Political signs.
Political signs do.
So I want to make sure you're clear when we say.
I believe all of us put signs up.
I mean, I think the example's valid, but I.
Yeah, I know.
But I think political signs, isn't there some kind of?
Yeah, there's, there's other rules.
It doesn't apply for a certain amount of time and.
Yeah.
Yeah. They're still not supposed to be in the right-of-way.
Correct.
But they don't have to be.
So the simple solution is no sign in the right-of-way?
Correct, because you're, you can't favor one over the other.
Yeah.
Right, and that was just the concern, that then businesses weren't able to advertise.
And you can't advertise for your garage sale and you can't.
Like Matt said, you can go to, somebody can knock on your door and say, hey, can I put a car wash sign in your yard?
I think the planning commission still brought up, like, well, so I think this brings up further question, which I had, which I think we semi-answer, which is, if I'm a resident and I see this, what should I do? Right? Like, what, because Public Works is not gonna go around and just look for these signs every day at the end of the day. We sure as heck don't have enough police officers. I'm doing it. The fire department's not doing it.
Yeah, but you still, you have a lot of people who will comply with the law.
No, 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 that's not my point. I don't, I don't disagree that one bit.
If somebody is.
So my point is more or less, and I'm, maybe I'll get there quicker, which is, someone puts a sign out for a day, because they're having a graduation party. No one calls and no one physically goes out and takes that sign down, then, like.
It worked.
It worked.
No, it didn't work, because that person may know it's illegal and they may not want to do it.
Correct. That, that's true. They may not.
I missed something?
No, no, what?
I think, I think what Matt's trying to say is if you, if you do it and no one says anything, you're fine. But if you.
I'm not saying you're fine.
Or should say.
Saying you got away with it.
Yeah, because this is no different than speeding, when you get, when you're driving down the road and you drive faster than the speed limit. If you don't get caught, you didn't, you didn't do it.
We hope everyone complies with law, but not everyone.
Correct, but not everyone will.
But now we have, if we want to enforce it, we have a way to enforce it.
Correct. If you say nothing is allowed in the right-of-way, that means that if somebody drives by and sees a sign, you can most certainly remove it. Or you could just, if it doesn't bother you, just leave it be and then keep on going.
So the enforcement would be kind of complaint-driven.
Correct.
Like everything else. That's what I'm trying to get at. Enforcement's complaint-driven. Or a home, a resident goes around and just starts the Incan signs out, and then they can do it now without, if they get yelled at, like, it's against city code, I've got the right to do this. Because my understanding is the citizens are probably the ones that are gonna be doing it. I think, I also want to say that just so people are aware that we're not asking the police officers nor Public Works to go out and be doing this.
And so when it comes to, say, political signs now, if they're in the right-of-way and a resident who opposes one or doesn't oppose the other, takes just one flavor. They're in compliance with the law.
Technically.
It's in the right-of-way.
It didn't stop them from doing it before, I can tell you that much.
I made a video about that.
I told you, I, I swear someone's got a garage full of my signs, so I guarantee that, that it didn't stop them before from doing it. Tell me I lost, I had to replay.
I don't know, I just.
And to be fair, during political, there is a separate sign ordinance that applies during that time, specifically for political signs.
In the right-of-way.
Not preventing people from taking them, but you can have multiple. So if you have change to the ordinance saying you're not gonna allow it at all, you still have to allow it during the political.
And there's something that also came up that the planning commission, well, politicians better be sure, I'm gonna reword it, and it was not worded this way, but politicians who approve this better make sure their signs are in the right-of-way. I want to be very clear, oftentimes, we don't put our signs in the right-of-way. We'll just say, hey, you want a sign, great, they'll take it and they'll put it up. Right? Or we'll put it and they go to move along, they move it. So just so people aren't thinking people, we're out there trying to be different than everyone else. Holy control so much of it.
I think.
Sure, I'm glad I'm not gonna have to worry about that.
I think most residents also don't know where the right-of-way is in front of their yard.
Right, there's a, there is a bad app.
I was able to look in, um, most spots are on fifteen feet, so just so you have an idea. From, from the edge of the curb, too.
What do we propose?
Go ahead, John.
Uh, just to be clear, so wherever the council decides, the county is still going to prohibit signs in, in the county right-of-way.
Right.
You know, so where you think of, you know, some of the examples where, uh.
County Road one-twenty-one.
Signs are in the county right-of-way, they still can't be there. So, and those are the most, the more visible corridors.
Oh, so I never, I didn't realize that. We're talking about city roads.
Correct.
Only city roads, that's it.
Okay, a lot of the intersections I'm thinking of are on a county road.
So it's already prohibited for county roads?
Except there they are, so. Okay, I don't know. So what are we proposing, or what? Is this it? Not allowed for you?
Yeah, we would just say, um, it would be, what we're proposing tonight, or what we have here is that you would have them not allowed at all. Basically, it's an all-or-nothing deal, and we would say nothing is allowed. Nor, and shall be allowed on, in the right-of-way period, on city streets, again. So county streets are something the county handles, not us.
Yep.
Right. So we had, um, like I said, I just amended subsection six, prohibited signs. Number two had billboards and off-premise signs, except those established prior to January eighth, two thousand and eight. I moved that to a separate line to thirteen, added obsolete and off-premise size, signs residential districts, because again, off-premise signs are allowed in business and industrial districts. There are restrictions, except those established prior to January eighth. And then no sign shall be permitted, which advertises a business which is not being presently conducted on the premises on which the sign is located, and then any sign within the public right-of-way. Those are the changes that we're proposing.
All right, I'll need a motion in a second.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
With the change.
To be clear, that's what the changes on the, on the.
Changes.
The requested changes are the recommended changes from city staff that went to the planning, that is correct.
And Travis, you seconded it, seconded it?
Yes.
Any more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no?
No.
Four oh one.
Did you vote yes or no, Scott?
It's given to you. All we did is, we spent fifteen minutes. Nearly accomplished, not.
All right, item U.
Thank you.
Headed another way.
Thank you.
Good evening, mayors and member, mayor and members of city council. Uh, we are close to being done here and we are, this is the twenty-twenty-four tax levy, so what I need to, tonight is a motion and a second for resolution fifty and fifty-one for both the general fund levy and the EDA levy, HRA levy for twenty-twenty-four. I will stand for any questions as you guys are making motions in seconds. I'm gonna try to get those done tonight so we can have those signed, so.
Motion.
I'll make the motion with the caveat, if you wreck a truck, you don't come back and ask for more.
Say what? All right, well, we'll consider that.
No, I'm just kidding. I'll make the motion.
Second. New second. I'll second. Okay, any more discussion?
Yeah, I just want to say, I'm gonna, I'm gonna vote yes on this, um, because I think it's a move in the right direction, although I still think it falls short of what the city really needs. But I'll see it as forward progress.
Any other discussion? I will be voting yes, because I think eighteen percent is a big number.
Big number.
Okay. So we got a motion, second?
Personally, I don't see the eight million dollar budget, but there it is.
There it is. Okay, are we done?
We're done.
All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed say no. Motion carries five to zero. Item V.
Yes. Good evening, mayor, members of council. Again, we have the long-term plan for twenty-twenty-four through twenty-thirty-three. Again, this is the plan. It does not mean you're accepting or approving any of the purchases on this plan. It's just saying that this is the plan we have for the next ten years. Looking next year to probably get a little more intense with the long-term plan as we really start to plan out dollars, because we need vehicles and equipment and buildings and such that are gonna take a lot longer than one to two years to get done. And just based on the fact that we learned that a tender pumper a couple of means ago takes thirty-six months. I'm gonna have to get a little more intense with our long-term planning. So we haven't had to do that historically, because we've been able to get things quicker, but with the current state of the economy, we are in dire need of getting things further out, so we'll spend a little more time on it next year, but looking to just get that accepted tonight.
Need a motion, second.
Questions.
Need a motion and a second.
I'll make a motion. I'll second it, because we talk about it anyway.
Any more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed say no. Motion carries five zip.
Thank you very much.
And after there are no objections, it will be adjourned.
When's the next, when's the next meeting? Because I'm, sorry, on the website, I don't think it shows the right meeting day.
Did not, did not get updated on the website. We will update that on the website, though. But it is December twenty-second at seven AM. We do not need all five people there. We only need a quorum, which is three.
I'll show up.
I'll be there.
We could have five. I just want to let you know that, I know that Scott doesn't like anything really early.
Seven o'clock, huh?
That's what was decided. AM.
Some of us have jobs, you know, gotta be at work at a certain time.
Some of us can coordinate your job to work into your day.
Easy when you're self-employed, Scott. Sorry, I didn't mean to digress. I just thought it was important.
Nope, December twenty-second. Thank you, thank you. Thank you, thank you.